I'm going to call to order the City Commission meeting of Shawnee on February the 19th. Call or roll, please.
Stevens?
Here.
AG?
Here.
Herod?
Here.
Maynard?
Here.
Hall?
Aye.
Here.
Winringer?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Have a quorum. Let's all stand if you're able and let's do the Lord's Prayer for our invocation. And then Commissioner Smith, will you lead us in the flag?
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thou is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome each and every one of you here to our commission meeting. Thank you very much for your interest in Shawnee. And to our audience, hopefully there's a lot of people watching and we'll do what they can to make our city a better place for all. So, first item is consider approval of the agenda. Have a motion by Commissioner Herod. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Call or roll, please.
Herod?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Winringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, well, we have, we'll let the lady first, okay? So Commissioner AG's made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
By Commissioner Hall. Call or roll, please.
AG?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Winringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Herod?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number three, citizens' participation. Again, I'd like to stress if you have something you'd like to tell us here at the city that you think we ought to be aware of that maybe we're not aware of, or whatever you'd like, we invite you to participate. This is, this is your, or, uh, city, not just ours. I, I, I think you're, you're, she's on the agenda later, is she?
Yeah, you're on the agenda.
Yeah, you're on the agenda, so when it comes time for that, you can speak, okay? Is it, it's not a hearing, okay? So if you'd like to speak, then I guess we probably need to let you speak. Better do it now, okay? It's not a public hearing. Come right up.
Forgive me, I don't know all of the rules.
Neither do I, so we're both in the same boat.
I just want to clarify some things and make sure that the request that we're making on the agenda is clear and give some extra information. The purpose of the request of the de-annexation of the 20 acres on Homer Lane is to benefit that community. We're not requesting that it be de-annexed to pull it out of city. We're requesting that it be de-annexed to help it happen. I, it's been shared with me that this addition cannot happen. It's a 16-lot addition. It's been shared with me that it cannot happen if it's in city limits because of the rules and regulations that are set in place for this development. This is going to be 16 lots of houses from 225,000 to 350,000 or up. It will have brick-rock entrance. It will pump probably about $40,000 plus a year, once it's developed out into the community. Not just to benefit county. I know that that's, this is a city council meeting. It's going to pump tax dollars into those 16 families shopping in Shawnee. Walmart, Shawnee Mall, eating, Lowe's, buying furniture. The tax dollars that it's going to pump into the economy to help benefit our entire area. I am a Realtor in the community, and there are no nice subdivisions that I can direct my clients to. They're having to go over to Choctaw, Harrah, to the outer edges of Shawnee. The Bethel area is in need of something like this. I have an investor, ready, willing, and able to do this development. I know that you have folks that go out and try to pull investors into the community to put their dollars into this. Just the raw development of it is just under a quarter of a million dollars to get this developed for the planning that's already gone on, the surveying, to put in a paved road, to do everything that's needed to make this a beautiful addition. I'm asking for your yes vote for the de-annexation of this property to make it happen so that it doesn't just be a piece of dirt on the edge of the city limits that's not going to happen at all. In order for the development to happen, I need your vote to continue forward with the development of the addition. So I'm asking for your yes vote tonight on the de-annexation to help this. I don't want it to just go dormant and dead. It can benefit you as well as the county, Bethel schools, with the ad valorem taxes that it will pump into our economics, and I'm asking for your yes vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' participation at this time? No, then we will move on to item number four. I'd like to recognize the city manager for a presentation of the Employee of the Month. Please, sir.
Brad's been with us since September of 2005. He's the interim maintenance manager. I guess you guys know that we've had some staffing changes, and this individual showed up on our radar as somebody who was willing to take on additional responsibility. So we took advantage of it. He and his wife Megan have a son named Jordan. He's organized and efficient with both time and materials. He cares for the employees and wants them to have the equipment and materials they need to do the job. Brad is a good employee and a good role model to other employees. Brad, congratulations. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to recess the city commission meeting and convene the Shawnee Municipal Authority. I am going to call it to order. We don't need to, we have a quorum, so let's see. Consider approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion and a second. I haven't heard a second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Call or roll, please.
Herod?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Winringer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, presentation to update progress on the Shawnee Municipal Authority Master Plan project by our consultants, I believe, here. So does the staff want to make a comment first, or, please feel free to do so, and then we can bring them up.
Steven Elms, interim utility director. I'd like to introduce Max Baldishwire and Tom Corillo for our SMA presentation for the master plan. Tom and Max are both here tonight.
That's great. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Max Baldishwire with Smith Roberts in Oklahoma City. This is Tom Crowley with Corillo out of Kansas City. Tom just flew in. I think your agenda says Maya Turner's supposed to be here, but Tom came in and just arrived a few minutes ago. But I wanted to, I was asked by the staff to give you an update on our progress, and I wanted to start out by handing out some water treatment plan projections that we can base our presentation off of.
So what we do when we do master plans is we look and take a somewhat conservative look at what your population has done in the past and project it out in the future. And we, we provide normally a range of what your anticipated water demands will be. I've done a lot of these, particularly here in Oklahoma. One of the things that we see as a trend is by the plumbing code and the energy codes that the, uh, putting in more efficient, just by attrition, more efficient toilets, more efficient showerheads, that you will naturally get some reduction in your average day demand. Now, what I've got to explain a little bit about is the difference between an average day demand and a max day demand. Typically, an average day demand is how much water you consume over the year. So you take the total amount of water that you can serve and you divide it by the number of days, and that gives you an average day demand. And typically, that's actually been decreasing for most utilities. Unfortunately, what your infrastructure has to be sized for is your max day demand. If you don't meet your max day demand, what happens is pressure within your system drops, and there's a regulation by ODQ that only allows you minimum pressure of about 35 PSI within your system. So we look at both average day from a cost perspective, how much is it going to cost for you to operate utility, and then from a water perspective, we look at your max day demands. What are we going to have to size your pipes for, your systems for, your water treatment plant for? So what we do typically when we look at this max day demand is we project that out, and there you see the projections in front of you that are based upon historical growth rates that we've been observed within Shawnee. The next thing that we do is look at your water infrastructure and determine what might be the next point. What is the weak point in the chain? So you have a chain that includes your raw water supply that comes through your lake, your treatment plant, your distribution system, and if any point on that chain is weak, it can't meet that peak day demand. So what we've done is we've looked at, preliminary looked at all of the data, looked at your supply side, looked at your treatment plant, and looked at your max constructing water model to look at your distribution system. Since it's, uh, it's a big network of pipes, what, here, we go. Since it's a big network of pipes and you have storage facilities, what we do is we look at these, we allocate the population expected growth, you know, you talked about a development. So we'd allocate some future development, some population, depending upon the housing density. And so what we'll do is we'll run the model for that and determine where the weak points are within the distribution system. The treatment plant gets the water to the distribution system, and we took a pretty detailed look at your supply and your treatment side, and we're working now on the water distribution side. The good news is, is your water supply system looks like it has plenty of capacity for the near immediate and, and distant future. You have about 14 million gallons a day, depending upon the lake level. If it's, if it's a below your, if the lake level's above your conservation action level, you're fine, up to, oh, 2060. The treatment plant, uh, it consists of several processes. And so we look at each one of these processes from a hydraulic standpoint, and then what we would rate on our best engineering judgment. That includes ODQ regulations, and it also includes our experience that we have in designing and engineering water treatment facilities. The next thing that's going to have to happen at your water treatment plant is you will have to conduct a pilot study at your filters. Your filters are your weak point of your treatment process. But the good news is that, is that by ODQ standards, they're only rated at three gallons a minute per square foot. But you're able to, we've, we've done this in the past. We've done this for the city of Norman. We're doing this for the city of Edmond. We've done this for Oklahoma City as well. And so what you do is you go in and you tell ODQ, okay, I understand that they're rated at this, but let's push them harder and monitor them. And if they meet all of your state requirements for performance of this filter, let's rate them higher. And that, that's a good news for you, and that, that's very little cost. So then beyond that, we feel that probably about 2020, 2030, somewhere around in that timeframe, you're going to have to look at your clarifiers and add filters. So, uh, good news is on the water plant, I don't think you need to do as much in the first 10 years. Beyond that, you're probably going to have to look at making some additions to the water treatment plant. Max is currently wa, working on the water distribution side. Yeah, go ahead.
This is the Info Water Model software that you purchased, and we also purchased. I've spent the last few months constructing this model. This is the actual model. You probably can't see, read this legend, but there's actually 4,000 pipes that I've modeled. So that's the reason it's taken quite a while to put all this together. But it's got all the elevated storage tanks in it. Elevated storage tanks and the booster pump stationed at the water treatment plant. My next activity that's taking me a while is I'm actually taking a month's worth of your winter billing records by address, and I'm setting that into the model so that the water knows where it needs to go. Does, most of it need to go up to OBU? Does it need to go to Meeker, et cetera? So I'm about halfway through that. That's 1,300 pages of billing information that Greg gave me, so I'm...
So you said the winter billing, or is it billing for the year, or is it...
It's, it's, I'm starting with the winter billing, and we'll have a multiplication factor for the summer. Looks like it's going to be about three and a half. So I'll have a winter model, I'll have a summer model, and then once we determine what your ultimate water demand's going to be, there'll be a future, maybe a 2030 model.
What's nice about the model that you selected is, in the future, when you go to a GIS system, which most cities are moving towards, where you get real-time information on your system, the billing records...
What is a GIS?
Geographical information system.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, is that, this is fully compatible with a GIS system. And when you go to this geographical information system where it's basically kind of like Google Earth, where you click on and you can see, but it's a Google Earth for Shawnee. You click on a pipe and it gives you all the information about a pipe. You click on a tank, it gives you all the information about a tank. Uh, this will be fully compatible with it, and then when you make updates in the GIS, it will be able to be updated in the model. So it'd be, in the past, the models that you had dealt with were so very, very labor-intensive and very, uh, very difficult for you to run it yourselves. But with a little training, you can run this model yourselves, and you won't need consultants. That's a good thing. For a little, for a little development.
This, this model, the model you're working on now, do you have enough measurement points on pressure and flows at the various points to really get the hydraulics right?
What we do is we model it, and then we meet with the staff. And the staff has the teledloggers that are out in the, in the city, and they're recording pressures, and so we'll be able to use that to calibrate the model.
Yeah, it's a good question. We, we need real-time information in order to get it to talk to, uh, the right, right talk.
Now, each one of these circles that you may or may not be able to see is a junction. That's an intersection of two different sizes of pipes or two different elevations if they drop. For example, if you were to have an industry or a school or something that moved out here, all your staff would have to do would be drop in the dot, put an elevation, a demand based on, you know, gallons per day or gallons per minute, winter or summer, if it peaks in the middle of the night or whatever. They would put those attributes on, on this junction, and they would draw the line based on just a spatial measurement, or whether they, you know, they knew the actual length of the line when it was installed. And then it would just, they would tie into another junction, and then they'd have the model complete, and they'd just follow it. So if they needed to fight a fire or whatever, they'd have that information.
Will this study be able to show the old lines that we have and the ones that really need to be replaced in a, in a sequence of the worst first or something, or...
It'll show, it'll show a section of town that has the worst pressure, and of course, your staff knows where most of the line breaks are, so it will show where pipes are undersized. It does have a attribute where you can put in the year that the pipe was installed, so you can actually print out reports and say, this is where all the old pipes are.
And some of the neat things that we can do now with models is determine proximity of schools and hospitals and criticality as far as how critical a pipe is, because you want to replace not only the ones that are old, but the ones that are most critical to your system. And that model will do that for you. And it'll spit out a ranking based upon some criteria that we work out with, with the city management and the city engineering staff.
Now, I thought I heard, and I hear things funny sometimes, is that our capacity at our water treatment plant and things, we're in pretty good shape. Is that what I'm hearing from you, in your opinion?
Yeah. In my opinion, what we need to do, I mean, obviously, your filters are limiting right now, and so right away, we need to start the pilot study and get a, try and get a variance from ODQ from their filtration rate standards. Okay? So I will say that right now, by ODQ standards, your filters are limited. But one of the things we can do is upgrade those filters by monitoring them and providing ODQ with the proof that they operate just fine at these higher rates.
With the same media, or would you have to change that?
Uh, we're in the process of actually working with Steve to redesign some of the media. And they need to do that anyway, and so it was part of their original CIP project, so. And that, that's a good question.
Is it too early to tell if there's any trouble spots?
Uh, I think we know where the trouble spots are just from talking to the staff, but, um, we, as soon as I get all the demand put in, then we should be able to model right away and see where the issues are. I know the center part of your town is the highest in elevation, so there's some, my understanding is there's some low pressure in those areas. So, uh, we'll see what the model shows.
Yeah.
You've got a, you've got a fairly flat town.
Yeah.
And it's, the infrastructure's really old, so we see that in all small towns in Oklahoma.
I was just curious about your schedule. Are you, where you thought you would be at this point in time when you first started working on this?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
I knew it was going to take a long time to put all those pipes in.
For the, typically for modeling efforts, and, and yours is, is, is a little bit unique in that you didn't, you didn't have much for us to input from electronic standpoint. Since these models are electronic, a lot of labor has to go into identifying the pipes and putting them in the model, just manually crunching it. Uh, once that is done, typically, that's the largest part of our work. Once that is done, the analysis goes pretty quickly.
I have a question, probably to you, Mr. City Manager.
Sure.
Will we have some of the critical steps that we need to do as we begin our budgeting process in a couple of months, you think we will have? Do you see that being a factor that we'll need to be looking at?
I don't. I think these gentlemen have until the end of the year, actually, to complete this. And if there are other directions we need to go because we reprioritize things, we can always amend the budget.
But is that going to be funding for like those filters he's talking about or something? I mean, we need to, I don't know.
That type of thing that these guys are talking about, I think we could do within our existing budget. I don't think that's a large expense. But I think at some point, if we want to endeavor into some of the larger capital projects, we might want to do some budget amendments.
Sure.
Now, I wanted to say one thing about these projections. Those came from your Shawnee Economic Development Authority and your city planner. And your staff has seen the projections, but we're going to actually have a, what we call a basis of planning, uh, meeting here pretty soon, so we can sit down and talk and say exactly what's our target. How many million gallons a day do we need to shoot for? And that, in that regard, that's how we'll decide what needs to be expanded in the plan, in the future. So we'll be getting the input from your staff on if they feel like these numbers are reasonable and which ones we need to target.
One question on this chart, the, the max average. You said that was the peak day or the peak, average peak for the year? What is that?
The average day is just simply the water use...
Right, the red.
The max day is the what's in blue.
But is it, but, oh, so it's, I mean, you titled it max average, so it's not really the average?
It's max day.
It's a max day.
Average average.
And what he sizes for, actually, is peak hour. So the hour, within the distribution system, is peak hour.
What about the sewage treatment plant? Is that part of your study also, it's water in sewer?
Last month, we calibrated the north plant, and so we're getting, we're waiting on some data from the staff on their hourly flows. Uh, but the model is calibrated and it's ready to go.
Will we get to the point where we'll decide whether we need additional tower or something like that to maintain pressure?
Yes. And on the sewage side, it's very, works very much like the water side, so you have your population growth, then you have a dry weather flow of sewage. And then when it rains, um, then there's a wet weather flow. And the model is used to predict that. Uh, it's also used to predict the capital investment that's necessary to reduce that wet weather flow. Because a lot of your facilities, it's a little bit different with the wastewater plant, but a lot of your facilities are designed to handle that big, massive wet weather flow. And if you have a lot of old pipes, which you do, and you have a lot of connections of people's roof drains to your sewer system, and, you know, the sewer laterals are in poor shape, it'll allow us to predict it and allow us to tell you whether you should spend your money to rehab that partially, fully, or should we spend the money to make it bigger? So that kind of will answer that question. And then there's another big question we've got to answer is, what do we do with the south plant? Uh, do we rehab it? Do we keep it? Do we move it somewhere else, or do we pump everything to the north plant? And that's, we're, right now, we're in the data gathering stage. We've constructed the model. We've constructed a hydraulic model, and we're looking at the very same things at the north plant that we're, we're looking to see if it's got extra capacity and how much it would take to, to, to take all of that south flow. Uh, and then it's going to be a kind of a fluid process as we develop that model, and we look at the costs associated with various scenarios. We'll be able to come back with you and, and with our recommendations.
Now, the, the city, of course, has those flo, uh, four flow meters that they purchased that were placed on the south side of town to determine where the most I and I, the storm inflows coming from. And of course, we hadn't any rain, so I know they're in place, but I checked with Greg here last week, and typically, it takes about an inch and a half or more to get, you know, a decent reading. And we just haven't had that.
Let's keep our fingers crossed for later on this week. There's a, there's a common saying in our industry, if you want, if you want a drought, just do a sewer study. It always seems to happen.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Have you ever been involved in a project of recycling, uh, waste?
Yes. Yes. Our, our company, I don't know if you know much about it, but, uh, we have a lot of offices in, in drought-scarce areas like Arizona, Texas, California. We've been involved in quite a bit of reuse projects all over the country. So, uh, that's not part of our scope of work, but it certainly could be considered. It's, I know, I personally have been involved with developing the reuse regulations for the state of Oklahoma with ODQ. I was on the technical task force with that. Uh, it's coming. Uh, it's coming to Oklahoma. Oklahoma City's looking at it to recycle water into Hefner. We're doing a study now for Norman that's looking at recycling water into Lake Thunderbird. Uh, ODQ and OWRB regulations remain an obstacle. It may be an obstacle for 10 to 20 years, we don't know. Uh, but with enough citizen input to this, to the state senate and on a local level, it may be get, may get done sooner.
Well, I ain't not bringing that up. You're talking about what to do with the south plant. Of course, they're located pretty close to the water treatment plant, so then, you know, it's at a less expense to recycle from there than it would be from the north plant.
That'd be hard still, James.
But I'm just saying, you know, if we keep on with our drought situation, I mean, we're...
City is in Texas.
How much of the water are we just actually, you know, flushing away and putting back in the river?
How many of you have been to Las Vegas? That's what Las Vegas does. All their wastewater goes into Lake Mead.
Help our sales tax, I guess bottled water sales will go up.
All their water goes into Lake Mead, and all those, all that water in the fountains is recycled. But if you look at it from a certain perspective, all the water we have is recycled.
Recycled, yeah. Well, it's almost, or it may be drinkable when you get to treating it, when you put it out in the river.
That's right. That's why we have a job.
Any other questions? It's a very good report. Thank you very much. We're looking forward to hearing more about it, and we all, waters are... Hearing more about it and, uh, we all, waters are key here. We've got, we're counting on you guys to help us get this thing figured out for our city.
Absolutely.
Because water is the single most important thing that we have in this city that we supply to our residents, so thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Or twice as hard as you have been, okay?
Thank you.
I don't believe we have any action on that item. Let's move to item number three. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding rebates for Granada Country Estates, Tanglewood, Coronado Terrace, and Cedar Creek Water Improvement District and authorization for collection of outstanding assessments. How about a staff report? Right, you're ready, huh?
I think so. Um, this has been around for about 10 years. Um, back in 2002, an ordinance was passed to do a special assessment district for some water and sewer lines, and the total cost was $567,000. At the time, there was 137 lots, um, and they divided it up amongst them to pay that cost of construction, which turned out to be an assessment of a little over $4,100. The, I think what was anticipated, anybody who tapped in after the fact, um, they would, the original 137 people would, um, get the rebate money, the money back. Well, we had two tapped in during that 10-year period, and there is rebates, um, that, well, let me back up one thing. Back in November of 2003, um, the commission at the time directed staff to develop a plan to reimburse 137. It never went anywhere else. So, what staff is asking is direction to go ahead and reimburse the original 187, which comes out to be like $82 per lot. Um, and we do have two people who are delinquent, and we would like to put their rebate toward their delinquent and then have our council go collect the rest of the money.
Yeah. Let me see if I understood what you said. You said that there were only two additions in all these areas in that period of time?
What happens, I think what happened was, there was a lot of vacant lots during the time.
Okay.
People who own the vacant lot went ahead and paid the assessment.
Oh, okay.
So, after the fact, they built the house, so people thought that there was an addition to tap, tapping, but it was not.
Okay, that makes sense, okay.
Do the rebates have to go back to those original lot owners or just the current?
They go back to the house.
The current, the current lot?
The lot.
That's why, what I was saying is that, you know, the people that actually put up the original easement or the money for the water line may not still own the property. Cause one thing that I was reminded of when I went through the items, I was on the commission at that time, was that, you know, we didn't charge for the tap fee or anything like that.
Engineering interest, any of that.
Interest or anything else, so, uh, I mean, I, how much money have we, and we didn't charge for engineering time or staff time to do the engineering for that, so, uh, I mean.
I just think there, that some of the people are expecting a rebate. They're out there, they were told that, I think.
But actually.
Did I, did I see a letter on that, Mary Ann?
Um, I'm, I'm scrolling, I don't remember. It, I know it came before the commission a couple of times and nothing ever really happened.
There's no final decision made, just to have staff come back to a refund. And never, since 2003, nothing has happened.
And the total is 137 lots?
Mm-hmm.
Eighty something dollars apiece?
Mm-hmm.
And the two that are delinquent, are they the original, do they even know that they're delinquent?
Yes, because what happened was, if they, yes, they do know they're delinquent. Um, they're, are the original homeowners, because if they had sold the property, we had filed a lien, so that lien would have been satisfied once they sold the property.
Now, let's go back. I, I circu, I saw a letter that a citizen sent me, Mary Ann, and I think I put it in here, and it was like, one guy was told that he would get his rebate.
Well, it was financed over 10 years, wasn't it?
That's correct.
Well, that's what we're here to.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that there, the people out there perceived that they were gonna get the rebate.
I don't remember.
And there's a, there's a letter around.
There was a rebate issue.
And they were told at $81.44, I think that was what the letter said.
Okay, so, yeah, I did see that, I didn't dream it.
So, is that the recommendation?
We just need to, to end this.
Yeah.
Ten years, ten years back and forth. How many times have you heard it in the last four?
Well, I, if you're waiting for a motion, I can make a motion that we go ahead and, and pay the, the $81 back to the 137, whoever.
Eighty-two, forty-nine.
Eighty-two, forty-nine.
Eighty-two, forty-nine.
We need a motion to do two things. One, rebate the money, and two, we need to file for the people that haven't paid, we need direction from the commission to get their money.
So, you need two separate motions, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, I think we can do it.
All right, can include it all in one? Okay.
I might not know.
On the two delinquents, what does he get in?
Can I ask a question?
Twenty-three hundred.
I mean, in the past, you, you said this had come up.
Mm-hmm.
Was there ever anything in substance or concrete or whatever that we were gonna rebate that money? I mean, has, is this something new stuff or has it been in the past?
The history, and she's been handling this for 10 years.
I guess I'm just kinda confused because it's kinda, it's kinda like, well, gosh, let's reach back 20 years ago and say, oh, of a sudden, now we're gonna pay for something. And I'm a little confused and I'm not comfortable.
For three years, Lisa had a calendar in her office that she checked off the days when she was going to retirement. We brought her back into retirement so she could kind of explain. And I think what may answer your question, Commissioner, is there was something that happened, again, this happened long before my time, but there was a point at which that we did something different in, in the middle there. And, and I don't know what that was. And you've explained it to me before, and I can't find it in mind.
Well, in October of 2003, the commission, uh, requested that staff meet with Neil Martin and some other groups, some other members of the original group to devise a plan to rebate the money. That was their intent. And then, um, in November, the staff made a recommendation, um, excuse me, not to do rebates, but the commission instructed them to go ahead and devise a plan. And that was several finance directors ago, and it just has not happened.
Well, that was in the original deal when we did the district.
Mm-hmm, that was the intent.
It was proposed then, it was voted down by the commission.
Okay, so, can I ask a question? Why is your rearing it ugly head now?
Okay, it's the end of the 10-year assessment, and, um, I believe a citizen contacted the mayor.
I just forwarded a letter to Mary Ann, so.
But, I mean, staff looks at this thing every couple of months, it comes up. We get, we get elected officials that run, people that live out in Granada goes, where is my check? That kind of stuff.
So, it's political in nature more so than?
No, well, I mean, you know.
We have a liability. We, 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 10 years ago, we said, at the end of this 10 years, you're gonna get a rebate for however many people that move in.
But the way that an assessment works, Commissioner, is there's an X amount of dollars that is spent to put the lines in, and then, when that money is completely paid back, that's when you give your rebates if there's anything to be gotten. What we don't have here is two property owners that haven't paid into it.
So, we're not right. You're not right for the rebate.
Well, I don't think, so you, we should not, we should not penalize the other 135 for the two people that are delinquent.
So, it's not right? The issue's not ready to be addressed yet?
Again, the staff's just looking for some direction, Commissioner.
Okay, I mean, I'm just, I mean, I'm just kinda asking the question.
Well, has any effort been made to collect that money before now?
Yes.
Leans.
Just with the property, we will get, once the property's sold, we will definitely get the payment. We've also sent out a certified letter to the delinquency, and there's been no response.
If you rebate this money, though, is all you can do is just continue to wait until they sell their house so that that lien will be paid or?
We could foreclose on the lien. We could go ahead and try to foreclose our lien.
That's what we're asking you guys to do as part of this motion.
Have we published who the liens are necessarily? Gosh, why don't we say who owns, who owes the money?
We can do that. Again, it's just.
I mean, I mean, after all, let's think, let's think about the part of town that we're talking about. Granada, Tanglewood, Coronado Terrace, Cedar Creek Water Improvements. We're not talking about that much money. Maybe we ought to say who, who owes the money? If, if all of those other landowners want their money back, which apparently they do, maybe they need to put a little peer pressure on the people that haven't paid in.
So, how much is that, 100% they still owe?
No.
No.
They've made some payments. We have one that is a total of $2,300, 22 of them.
So, what would the reimbursement be if you take that 2,300 off?
About?
I mean.
It would probably be about $70 if it's them.
Yeah. I mean, we're talking about giving people back 82 bucks apiece. That won't even buy my kids a pair of tennis shoes. So, they're worried about 82 dollars, but yet, the people that owe the money won't pay it? Let's be fair.
Well, I, I guess I have a problem. If you tell me you're gonna give me some back, we need to give it back to them.
When 100% is paid.
We never said 100% paid. That wasn't part of the agreement, I don't think.
I mean, you know, again.
I don't know.
I think that's what you said when everybody was paying, 100% paid.
This thing has a 10-year history to it, Commissioners, and it comes up over and over and over again, and I have not put it on the agenda because the city has not been made whole.
We're short 2,300 still.
That is correct.
That's right.
And we are responsible to the taxpayers for the tax dollars, regardless of the amount.
Is there a delinquency or an interest that, that they're being assessed because they haven't paid it?
I think we just filed for the original amount that required.
It bore four and a quarter percent, and so, um, you know, we'd.
We did make some interest.
Yeah, this, actually, this all jumped the track when it started because it was not done like a normal assessment district. And so, when, when you don't put all the protections in at the beginning, this is kind of where you end up at the end.
Well, the staff worked with their attorney. I mean, they spent hours and hours and days and days on it.
Well, I don't doubt that, but I'm just saying it, it's not the usual format, um, so.
Well, I guess, I mean, in the West, I think if we, if we tell them, we need to take some sort of action, whether, whether it's to reimburse it now or move forward and collect the 2,300, we need to do something to, to move the ball down the court, right?
Yes, sir. Make a motion to collect the 2,300.
I'll second it.
We already have a motion? Got a motion on the floor, but was?
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
How's that?
Okay, what does that mean, to collect the 2,300? Does, and does that mean deduct that from the reimbursement to those people that it's collected, or you're saying you don't want to pay them a dime until the 2,300 is collected?
Right, sir. And then, we can.
We don't pay anybody until those last two people pay, and then, we bring it back before, so we do what we have?
So, is that a motion to authorize me to file suit if necessary to collect the 2,300?
I think.
I have to have your permission to go sue somebody.
It's your motion.
Yeah, I think so.
Go get him, Connor.
Okay.
It's Mike John.
We break until after we come to.
So, when this 2,300 is collected, then we will be back and then decide to reimburse those people?
No, I think you can make a motion that, like the 2,300, once the city is full, then we can give authorization to the staff.
Then the city has the authorization. According to the way assessments work, then the city can just reimburse everyone.
Maybe we doesn't have to come back.
Is that the way the motion reads, or do you need a special wording?
You're gonna, with that, are you including authority that once it's collected for the city to make the rebates? Or do you want it to come back?
No, we could come back and say, there's some rules up to date, it's been delayed.
Then John could be the good guy.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
I already seconded it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, Pam Snyder, seconded. Commissioner Snyder, okay, call a roll, please.
I love the netty.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number four, consider bids on the sanitary sewer rehab project.
Um, I'm gonna read off the sealed bids for the sanitary sewer rehab project, um, various locations. Uh, first bidder was Urban Contractors out of Oklahoma City. His bid amount was $772,000, 70, 772,660. TriStar Utilities out of Independence, Kansas, was $1,079,209. We have Craft Rentals out of Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, $909,348. Calca Construction out of Chandler, Oklahoma, $1,296,170. And then, Jordan Contractors out of Tecumseh, Oklahoma, $740,955. And I would like to defer the word until the next commission meeting to have time to go over the bids.
Second. Motion and a second to defer it?
Please, the second, your second.
Commissioner Hall. Call a roll, please.
Thank you.
Herod. Sorry, Herod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. McGuglin, any new business?
Mr. Chairman, no new business or administrative reports to you.
Okay, then we will adjourn the Shawnee Municipal Authority and call to order the Shawnee Airport Authority. Item number one, consider approval of the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Herod made a motion. Do, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hall, a second. Call a roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, any new business?
Uh, no new business or administrative reports, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then, we will reconvene then the city commission meeting, having completed these two things. Item number five, is a public hearing and consideration of a resolution granting a vehicle for hire license to the Castle Cab. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commission members. This is a request that does not come before you very often, but the request before you this evening is a request for a vehicle for hire license. This would authorize the applicant Castle Cab to operate taxi service within the city of Shawnee. Any driver that would drive for Castle Cab is also individually licensed through the city and does undergo a background check. Did want to mention that as well. The section of city code that relates to vehicle for hire licenses is fairly antiquated, and as part of our larger effort to recodify the code, staff is looking at making some changes. It's quite different than a number of other communities in the state that have updated theirs more recently. And I think part of the reason why this, why our code is as such is because we haven't had an application come before us since 2000. And so, really haven't, the light hasn't sort of shined on it like it has recently in terms of the need to review and revise this. But it is what we are under currently, and the applicant is aware of the state of the current code and has chosen to make this request before you. But when you look at section eight dash five oh two, what your task is, as a commission, is to hold a public hearing and by resolution, in order to issue a vehicle for hire license, declare that the public is not adequately served at the present time and that public convenience and necessity require an additional service. And you can read, I included that code section in the staff report. Hopefully, you've had a chance to kind of look at that criteria. Some of those criteria are a little hard to evaluate, but I did do some analysis on, under page two of the report, and I'm just gonna highlight some of those statements now. At present, there is one existing vehicle for hire business in the city, and that operates under the name Executive Cab. Executive Cab has been licensed by the city since 2000. It was approved by the Shawnee City Commission on January third of 2000, to be exact. At present, Executive Cab has two licensed drivers operating under its business name. And according to the information on file, they have three vehicles that are able to provide service. With respect to the request from Castle Cab before you this evening, public convenience and necessity is a difficult criteria to evaluate, and we have not, absent some type of community-wide survey, I don't know how we would accurately judge that except based on any public testimony that you get here this evening as well. I think you may make the assumption that because another private business wishes to establish a presence in Shawnee, that perhaps the public is not adequately served, just like if any other type of business was operational in the city or wanted to come to the city, they would see a market need to do so. So, I think that may be something that you factor in. Castle Cab, as a company, has operated in the Oklahoma City metropolitan area, according to the information I have from the Secretary of State since 2011. I believe they operate several vehicles in the Oklahoma City metropolitan area. I believe they will dedicate either one or two drivers to the Shawnee area if approved. And with that, staff does not have any additional information that would lend additional support or non-support for the request. I did look back, about a year ago, there was a study that I think some of you may have been a part of or may have went to the meetings that was connected by the AARP regarding transportation options in Shawnee. That study and that survey focused primarily on the need and the lack of public transportation. They did not use the word taxi cab or vehicle for hire at all in their survey. Went through that in detail, so unfortunately, that does not provide a lot of additional information. But based on the best available information that we have, staff does recommend approval of a vehicle for hire license to Castle Cab. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Go ahead.
I have one. Under section eight dash five oh four liability insurance, it's got on here the minimum of ten thousand dollars per person and twenty thousand dollars per accident, ten. That's not even state minimum standards.
Right, and I think.
Is that gonna be?
The state minimum would apply. The statement of him does overrule our local ordinance, and that again just highlights the need to revise.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, you know, through this process, if there's nothing else that we recognized, our ordinance is way out of date. And I've asked Justin to begin the research so that we can get something to you that will make it come in today. We could probably avoid a lot of the discussion that, we've met with the Wallaces, and we've met with Mr. Sampson with Castle Cab, and they all want to be a part of the process of rewriting the new code because it's so antiquated. So, we could probably dispose of a lot of that, but at the same time, we didn't want Mr. Sampson and Castle Cab to be necessarily not allowed to apply for a license just because our ordinances were not up to date. So, we will get that to you just as soon as we can, but we felt like it was proper to get him into the process so that he could be here tonight for approval of a license.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Do the rates, are they set by the city like in some cities so that everybody is charging the same, or how is that?
Yes, sir, they are. And the rates actually were last updated, believe it or not, in about 2000 as well, by a separate resolution. And we kind of, we currently utilize a zone system that charges different rates depending upon the zone, which is hard to interpret and not very efficient. Most communities just have a flat rate per mile, and they'll have a base fee and plus an additional rate per quarter, per fifth of a mile. And that's what Oklahoma City does.
So, will that be part of that update you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Now, these ordinances that are obsolete, are they ordinances that can still be enforced?
Yes. Yeah, I believe they can still, yes, they certainly can be enforced. And there's parts of the ordinance that are good in terms of requiring that the cab be, be, um, be lettered and the driver be, you know, licensed to go through the background check. They also have to provide rate sheets, and it has to be prominently posted within the vehicle. Communities like Oklahoma City that have hundreds of cab drivers actually have cab driver inspectors that do nothing but license and inspect cab vehicles. For a smaller community like ours, we would do something, be a little bit scaled down, but still protect the public and be more easily enforceable than our current ordinance.
Background check, that's just a record of their past. Are we gonna ask for drug testing or anything like that?
We currently don't do that. There are some communities that do. I think, again, it gets to a point of how do you, how you staff that type of endeavor?
I mean, we could have that out, and we could outsource that, but I think we owe that to the citizens.
We can certainly look at with the new ordinance.
But Castle Cab, understanding that the rates are from back in 2000, they're willing to accept that as the rates they'll be charging now just to essentially get their foot in the door, is that correct?
That is my understanding, ma'am.
When will we get the new ordinances?
Can you knock those down?
Four or five weeks.
Kind of our goal would be to get it with the reconsification, so, you know.
I'm on page seven-hundred-and-seventy-five in the twelve-hundred-page draft.
Wow, you've made a lot of progress.
I haven't, I have probably six sections done with ordinances done. This is not one of them. We're looking at substantial revisions. I mean, it's against the law to have a minor go bowling in Shawnee, and we probably are not gonna be enforcing that. I don't think we have for some time.
Hey, I make a motion, go ahead and approve the.
Well, now, we're not there yet. We got a public hearing. Hang in here, Wallace, okay? Sorry. I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing, okay? And for the people that in favor of it, I'll let them speak first, and then the people that are in opposition to it, I'll let them speak second, okay? So, would anyone here like to speak in favor of this? Okay, sir, come forward and state your name, please, and sign in.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Tony Sampson. I am the owner of Castle Cab. I've been in business for the last, as you know, two years, going on three years. I've been in the service, pardon me, for ten years. I am aware of the traffic laws, violations, things of that nature. There is a random drug test, as you referred to in our policy as to Castle Cab. There is a red, excuse me, a random drug test that is mandatory for everybody. There is an OSBI background check that is mandatory for everybody. Every thirty to sixty days, we reroute and we look and see, you know, who's been in trouble, who's been this, who's that. There's a question as to, is there a need for Castle Cab? If you call my dispatch right now, someone will answer that phone. I have a twenty-minute response time, no matter anywhere in the city. I have a twenty-minute response time. I think Shawnee is big enough that it can hold five cars. I don't think that's a problem. I think it's a matter of growing it. There's enough casinos, there's enough people. From the lady that gives you your McDonald's in the drive-thru to the little woman that wants to go to get her nails done, to get her hair done. What gives anybody the right to refuse that? There's not. Census has, I don't know, probably twenty thousand people in the city of Shawnee. Two cabs is impossible. You can't run a cab service with two cabs. It's impossible. It just won't happen. You know, let's say you get sick and he needs to go somewhere, but her car won't start. You got three people all trying to go at the same time. It's impossible. It just won't work. You have to have some form of transportation. There's no busing system. You know, you go to nursing home. Your mom wants to come see you in Oklahoma City from the nursing home, but you've got family at your house, so you don't want to go to Shawnee to pick your mom up at the nursing home. You want her to be here with family. Who else better? Call the cab. That's what they're there for. That's the service they provide. And that's, the only argument that I have is there is a need for Castle Cab. And anything that Brian has ever needed, you know, we've conversated before over ordinances and different things. I'm more than willing to give you anything I got, show you what I got, and proceed as Oklahoma City does, not quite on the same scale. I mean, we don't need that much drastic in Shawnee.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this?
I'm young, Sampson, I can't reach it.
That's okay.
Any questions, sir? What about wheelchair passengers?
Yes, sir.
Castle Cab does not have wheelchairs.
I do run a wheelchair service out of Oklahoma City. I don't know if there's enough of a need. I would love to be able to take care of you for the simple fact that you have just as much right to go to the store as the guy who else we seen.
Right now, people with wheelchairs, they're going to go some road down the street, behind the sidewalks.
Yes, sir. And there's no way, there's no way I can justify that. The only thing I can tell you is I do have wheelchair vans, and I'm willing to put in wheelchair vans. I also run a logisticare, which is better known as Superdrive.
And most of us, we can transfer over to it, and our light wheelchair can be put in there.
Yes, sir.
But Castle Cab doesn't do that.
Yes, sir. Your wheelchair will be put in there. And we also have wheelchair vans and wheelchair tables, which means the trunk end opens up, the wheelchair ramp lays down, and it's on a as-deep basis. I mean, as I know that it is needed, I can put them in, I can hold them. That's not a problem. I mean, anything I can do to help the city of Shawnee be more productive and more of a society, I'm ready.
Great.
Okay, I couldn't determine whether that was an opposition or whatever, but it's just a good question. Thank you very much for asking.
My question is, are we not getting, are you not getting that service now?
The vans of the cab does not pick up anybody in wheelchair.
Really?
They have judgment against them, Department of Justice.
Really?
Yes. All right, mediation, I turn down.
But we have handicap vans in town. I think that the tribe and I think, is there?
We have a contract with COPS to provide transportation for wheelchair-bound individuals and folks that have special needs for transportation, and that is an option in Shawnee.
But it's hard sometimes for them to, in all honesty, get reservations. They're like forty-eight hours out. They're booked and things like that, so I can understand your concern.
They go to Walmart one time a week.
And they go to Walmart one time a week. Okay. Okay, would there be anyone else? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this matter? Okay. Please state your name and sign in, please, so we will know.
Good evening. I'm Gloria Wallace Hutchison. Good evening, Mayor, to the whole council. Good to see you all this afternoon, this evening. And I am opposing, and not so much of another service, but what has gone, what has transitioned in the last six months. My husband and I, we're owners of Executive Cab, and we've serviced the city, as Justin has said, for ten years in the Potawatomi County area. And just in rebuttal to what he said, we do taxi wheelchairs, those that will fold and go into the car. We cannot lift an automatic. They're too heavy. We cannot do that. That is just, that's why there's lifts on vans and so forth to do that. So, in light of item number five, I have concerns in various scenarios that I would like to share with you at this time. And as I share this with you, I would like for you to think about if someone came into the Shawnee area and posed as the city manager, as the mayor, as commissioner, if they were from Minnesota, Tex, excuse me, Texas or wherever, would it be right or legal if they had not been voted in or appointed? Or any other thing that was, that's legal, that needs to be legally done in order, the process that it demands to get there? So, since July 2012, this is some scenarios I just want to share with you. An illegal and unlicensed taxi, meaning not licensed by the city of Shawnee, has been sighted here in the city of Shawnee soliciting transportation services to individuals. Castle Cab company was displayed on the vehicle advertising with the number five-nine-five, fifty-nine-nine-nine. So, one night, I'm out driving, and I called this number after spotting the taxi transporting individuals southbound on Harrison. I called and I asked the individual who answered the phone if Castle Cab was licensed to operate in the city of Shawnee. And with hesitation in their voice, the individual stated, "Yes." This illegal activity was reported to Justin Erickson, who researched the website of Castle Cab to verify and confirm with me that this was a taxi out of the Oklahoma City area, which many local residents and city of Shawnee employees have sighted in the Shawnee area operating illegally. Justin stated that he would contact Castle Cab and alert them that they would need to cease operation due to not being licensed with the city of Shawnee. After making that report, the individual that was seen driving the Castle Cab was then seen transporting individuals in an unmarked, white-crowned Vic with no taxi license plate. This activity continued for another month or so, then the Castle Cab vehicle resurfaced transporting individuals twenty-four hours. We received reports, you know, taxi service is kind of like beauty shop, barber shop. So, we received reports that fares were made by the drivers asking, "What does Executive Cab charge?" And then he would charge a lesser amount than Executive. He has advertised by giving his phone number to casinos, hotels, restaurants, et cetera. Then also, in addition to that, Executive Cab had a poster that was displayed at our local bus station on Highway seventy, one-seventy-seven, and that was taken down and replaced with a number for Castle Cab to call Johnny. In early January, after continuous spotting Castle Cab running rapid throughout the city of Shawnee, I then returned to visit with Justin, and he advised me that he would contact Chief France as to what was going on and that I should contact Chief France as well regarding the matter. Justin confirmed as well that he had seen Castle Cab running the streets of Shawnee. Also, a second Castle Cab vehicle was spotted posted on the corner of Bell and Farrell Streets, and we received word that another driver was being hired in the area. Indeed, the Shawnee Police Department did a great job in early January to stop them illegal activity. But the very next day, the same individual was spotted driving an unmarked vehicle again, transporting passengers. Most recently, Saturday, February sixteenth, approximately twelve-thirty, eight PM, the Castle Cab vehicle was spotted transporting an individual north on Harrison. The city of Shawnee has codes and ordinances that are in place, of which we in the taxi business are to adhere to and abide. Castle Cab has blatantly and continuously violated the following codes. Section eight, four-six-two, penalty for violation, operated six months in Shawnee without being licensed by the city of Shawnee. Section eight, four-six-three, enforcement cooperation with enforcement officers, continued operating unmarked vehicles without taxi license and plates, tags. Section eight, four-six-seven, rates, charged rates that were not regulated by the city of Shawnee. Section eight, four-seven-three, driver's license, operating without city of Shawnee taxi driver's license. Laws and codes are to be enforced and not to be broken. Therefore, I would like to request and petition the commission, being non-biased in the matter, the refusal and restriction of Castle Cab from being issued a vehicle for hire license due to continuous, we're looking at a six-month period of time that this went on, disrespectful and blatant actions towards the laws and codes of the city of Shawnee. A reward should not be given for those actions. Thank you so very much for listening and for your ethical cooperation in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition to this? I think we've heard kind of what we've done, so, okay. At this time, I'll close the public hearing, okay? And we have a staff recommendation that we do approve this. So, again, if I heard Mr. Erickson correctly, did I hear you correctly on that? Yes, so, this chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, go ahead and approve the licensing.
We have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Commissioner AG. Would you read the title, please?
This is a resolution of the Shawnee City Commission approving a vehicle for hire business license as set forth herein.
Call a roll, please.
Hall.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six, consolidation of an ordinance deannexing a twenty-acre parcel located near Walker Road and Homer Lane. We've already had a public hearing on this item, and it's been closed, the public hearing, so discussion, please. Any commissioners?
One of the reasons this was deferred from last time was to find out actually if the, if the ordinance on the, I guess, annexation or whatever it was in the forties or sixties or whatever it was, had been filed in the courthouse and so forth. My understanding that it had not been.
It had not been, but both our local ordinance says that if that isn't done, it's not a defect, and state law, case law says if it's not done, it's not a defect, the annexation. defect, and state law, case law says if it's not done, it's not a defect, the annexation ordinance is still good. The, and we have not, records weren't available online that we needed. The original application that we got and the title, the platting everything, has an error in the legal description, and I don't know if there was a problem with that when someone looked at the courthouse. It also annexed a large tract, and it could be that part of it was missed. So, but...
You mean our legal description and...
No, the legal description they brought in in this application had an error. Ours is correct in the ordinance, and it's, it's correct on, on this ordinance that's before you, if you were to deannex it, but the annexation is good, is valid.
I talked to a friend that does title research and so forth, and he said that they specifically asked whether it's in the city or in the county, they don't address that, that they have never addressed it, unless it's specific that it had to be one or the other. Because the county commissioner told us the other day that that, he's been grading the roads, keeping that area up, so I, I have mixed emotions about it, I don't know.
I have mixed emotions about it because first of all, the development is going to build what I would consider relatively, well, very expensive homes, I mean, my house didn't cost that much. And those people out there are going to need services, they're going to need Walmart, they're going to need the homelands, they're going to need to go to the mall, they're going to need Kmart, Dollar General, they're going to bring tax dollars back into our community, and if we don't deannex and let this small little, and I like to call it a little community, develop, those are people that are going to go outside of what I consider our regional area. I mean, for the last six years that I've been on the commission, we've talked a lot about, you know, let's think regionally, let's bring services and goods from around our rural community, not just what's inside the city limits. Across the street from this development, there's something very similar. So it's not like this is just going to be a little housing development out in the middle of nowhere with sixteen or seventeen one-acre lots, there's a companion community, so they truly are going to build a community out there. And if we don't do something with this land, what are we going to have? Pasture. What's it going to bring into our community? Nothing. If we require it to be broken up in five-acre lots, what do we get? Fewer homes, fewer families, fewer tax dollars that can be brought back into our community. And I know that we're not in the precedent of deannexing land and pushing land out, because we need the land, because Shawnee needs population-wise to grow, but yet where are these people going to go? If we don't provide them a place to live within our community, where are they going to go? They're going to go outside of our regional area. So, we may be stepping outside our comfort zone, sometimes you have to do that. And I think the fact that that area is already being developed, and there's the interest there, they've got people who want to buy these homes, you're talking two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar homes. Really, where else in Shawnee are you going to build that? You're not building it in the central part of town. And I think it's just, we have to think outside the box, we have to think regionally. If we start deciding that wherever our boundaries are, that's going to be Shawnee America, then okay, we better be willing to accept Shawnee America is only going to provide services for our boundaries. Because we can't turn around and tell the rural communities and the county, hey, come in and use our stores, come and give us your tax dollars, but oh, by the way, we don't want you to live here, and we don't want you to live right outside of town, because we're not going to be good neighbors. They did their research, and I, and I mean, I feel really bad that there was a defect along the way and that their legal description was wrong, I mean, that's bad, but let's look at the bigger picture. There's so much more begained than us just saying, ah, nope, our code says five acres, sorry, too bad. What else are you going to get? Nothing.
This land was annexed in the nineteen-sixties, Mary Ann.
Nineteen sixty-two.
Nineteen sixty-two, and at that time, it was just a piece of land, just bare land. And today, it's just a piece of land, bare land, and what we talked about forty, fifty years ago. And if, if we don't deannex this, I think, and allow this to be developed with these nice homes, forty or fifty years from now, it may be just a piece of land. This is not directly attached to the metro area. There's a lot of land between the core metro area and the Shawnee Twin Lake area out there where this property is located. And so chances are, there's not a business or anything else going to go in here that's going to generate the amount of added lower tax that these properties are going to generate. And this is a tremendous benefit to the county, but it's also a benefit to the city of Shawnee also, because some of those added lower tax dollars are going to go to fund our VOTEC schools, like Gordon Cooper, some of that money's going to go to the Health Department, and it's going to help fund Meals for Sings and Project Heart. Some of those dollars are going to go to the county library. We've worked with the county before on other issues like economic development, and hopefully a nine-one-one consolidation and emergency services, and the county sheriff's coverage in that rural area. So, and they've been maintaining the road out in front of it for many years, so there are a lot of benefits directly to the city of Shawnee from deannexing this property. Again, it will add to the value of that area. The city owns, not just in the city limits, but the city actually owns a lot of land out there around the Shawnee Twin Lakes, and this will add to the city's property value eventually, much better than if it were allowed to just sit there and lie fallow. I'd like to point out before I finish up here, and I promise to be brief, there were some drawbacks that were mentioned to deannexation, and I want to point out some of the flaws that, that I think, it's my opinion, in that it says density is greater than the surrounding area, that historically that has been correct, but we know that there is a development going in with ten one-acre lots right across the road from this property. This property is on the very outskirts, very edge of the city limits, and is surrounded by county land, so this development is going to take place, whether this is deannexed or not. So we're not really going to be affecting to any great extent the rural feel of that area. Sixteen additional wells and septics in the watershed. Two years ago, the city commission approved a plat from the school land commission containing sixteen new one-acre lakefront lots. These lots are right on the water. The property that we're talking about is a few miles from the water, so I don't think that's a valid argument. The fact that it may spur additional annexation requests, I don't think that's valid either, because these are very unique circumstances. How much land does the city own that it annexed at one point in time that is not recorded at the county, or the county clerk's office? If there's a lot of that out there, I think that's where we need to be concentrating on our efforts, is finding that. I just think when you do look at it overall, and you looked at the big picture, there actually is a lot more benefit to the city of Shawnee to deannex this land than, than to not do so.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
It sounds like a great project, I, I think the addition would be, you know, really nice, and do a lot of things that we've heard tonight. I only have one question, is, is, you know, developer two comes along and says, well, I bought twenty acres on the east side, or on the north side, and I want to deannex it. What's our, you know, what's our answer to that?
The land on the north side is not in the city limits.
There is land on the north side, there is land on the east side.
Not in the city, well, there's not any land on the west side or the north side.
I'm talking anywhere, anywhere on the ground.
Oh, you're talking about in the city proper.
I think you can distinguish this on the facts, in that the developers here purchased the property thinking that it was in the county. I think that the facts will demonstrate that their assumption was correct. I don't think you're going to have our county commissioners coming in here every time somebody purchases a piece of property in the county. I think they have more integrity that, than that, than just to, you know, every time committed say, oh yeah, well, they purchased it in the county, and we're going to act like it was in the city or whatever. I mean, I just, I don't think the precedent is there, and I think that future cases can be distinguished on the facts, given the circumstances.
And that's all I'm asking, is if this is not going to set precedent?
I think it's unique enough that, that it won't.
Do you have an opinion on that, Mary Ann?
I don't think it sets any kind of legal precedent. I don't think you tie your hands from point of view of, of a legal precedent.
Let me ask you another question, if, once we get past this, can we make sure that that, make sure that that is filed in the courthouse, or whatever we need to do, maybe we're going to have this problem again, or what's the situation on that?
I've made the suggestion that somebody needs to take it in their hot little hand to go and actually look. If, if, because it, that ordinance annexes several tracts, it may have been recorded on two of them and not on the third, and, I mean, you know, I don't know who was doing that in nineteen sixty-two, but a double check, at least on that ordinance, probably wouldn't hurt.
Is this when, whenever the city got into the city of Oklahoma City, when they were trying to take our lake property into their city limits?
The timing is...
So that they would have a water supply out of...
Shawnee's had that...
Is that about the same time?
That was part of, some of the annexation wars between Oklahoma City and surrounding territories did go on in the early sixties, I can't say for sure about this one, but other places where I have worked, there, that matches up with...
Well, McLeod and everyone else tried to stop them, so they annexed everything they could to stop Oklahoma City, because Oklahoma City comes inside the county right now, so... And I, we were questioning this addition out here that went across the street from them, and, and, so it's, it's not, it's not in Oklahoma City, or it's not in McLeod, it's actually in the county too, so, that's just one of those areas out there.
Commissioner Wininger.
Mary Ann, can somebody annex that into their city and make that part of another town other than Shawnee, or, since it's in the county?
Well, the ability to annex without the consent of the property owners is now gone. And I think though, I'd have to look, because I don't remember if that got changed too. I think there's a limit how close somebody can come to us, but there may not be. If they, if Oklahoma City gets out there close, and they want to go to Oklahoma City, and everybody between them and Oklahoma City wants to go to Oklahoma City, they can go to Oklahoma City. Or McLeod, or whatever, I don't know how far it is to Oklahoma City from there. Not very.
It's still, I think, a mile or mile and a half.
What's the possibilities of rezoning that and keeping that in the city of Shawnee and work with delaying the realtor to keep those in the city limits?
Question for Justin and Brian.
Excuse me, we did talk about that last time a little bit, but, you know, the possibilities, I think, are, are slim, and in terms of the timeframe, I, I don't think it would, it would work well for her timeframe. I think she probably needs resolution, one way or the other, reasonably quickly to move forward in some fashion. And so with, with the rezoning application, you'd be talking about another application process, a notification process, a public hearing, we'd be ninety or a hundred and twenty days down the road. And if you might recall, I said last time, almost all of the land around the lake is zoned day one agricultural, and with a five-acre minimum lot size, so, so then, you know, they would obviously be asking for a rezoning for a much denser development, which would be uncharacteristic for the, for the neighboring zoning, so it would be difficult for, for staff to recommend approval. Obviously, the commission can, can do as it chooses, so.
I have a legal question. Can you require, if the commission votes for it, that they put in their contract for deed, or whatever it is, that they can't go to Oklahoma City and spend the dime?
Sure, absolutely. I, I don't know that we could enforce it, but we could put it in there.
Okie dokie. Any further discussion? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the ordinance deannexing the twenty-acre parcel located near Walker Road and Homer Lane.
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Hall. Call or roll, please.
Can I read the title?
Oh, I guess you should. City Attorney, read title, it says that right here.
An ordinance deannexing or detaching certain property now within the city limits of Shawnee describing said property repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinance in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency.
Stevens.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Wininger.
No.
Smith.
No.
Agee.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number seven, consider a resolution accepting the transfer of ownership of the local cable franchise from Allegiance Communications LLC to BCI Allegiance LLC. Staff report first.
Mr. Chairman, certainly, Mr. Chairman. Staff's been meeting with the, the new cable ownership for about a month now. The FCC is pretty tight on how this stuff is regulated, and basically what they need from you guys is the resolution passed so that they can go forward with new infrastructure installation. These gentlemen have shared some, some pretty good things with me regarding some of the changes, they're positive. I think our cus, their customers will see a lot more for a good price, but I'd like for them to come to the mic and, and let the commission know what their plans are.
Come everyone in favors, line up and start speaking. Here first.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, thank you very much for this opportunity to come and just introduce myself, the company, and what we're planning here. Just, my name is Sean Bakai, I'm Vice President of Government and Public Affairs. First, I'd like to apologize, I got here a little bit early, and Brian was good enough to recommend Benton's Cafe for a quick meal, and their home-cooked turkey dinner might have me nodding off, so if I do, please hold him accountable. We are, the B in BCI broadband is a name, Bresnan, and Bill Bresnan is well-known and one of the best respected names in our industry. He, outside of Mankato, Minnesota, in the early fifties, put a stick on a hill and wired downtown Mankato, and really birthed an industry right there, built the largest cable company in the world, sold it to Westinghouse, and at that time decided that he really liked working in small towns, and started investing in small towns in the peninsula, Ironwood, Michigan, which looks a lot like Shawnee as far as size and availability. And the reason he did that was, these small towns are often forsaken by larger companies. They, with all the best intentions, put their capital in larger cities like Oklahoma City. We, our business model has always been, if you invest in these small towns, excuse me, you, and bring the very latest of services, the customer in the business there is just as good, if not better, than in larger cities. We have demonstrated over thirty years that this is a good business model. We built a large company, and out of nowhere, got a bid from Paul Allen from Microsoft to buy it. And Bill has a philosophy, or had a philosophy, that if you pay people a little bit lower than scale, but gave them a vested interest in their company, in your company, you have employees with a stake, and really, and really care about their company. And as such, he couldn't really turn down this offer, and ended up selling the company. And as a result, made a lot of, changed a lot of people's lives. He decided, at that point though, everybody was too young to retire, so he kept out of his own pocket, a group of, a core group of, of management, about thirty people, and we went looking for another company to buy. And at that point, we bought the, the cable systems in Montana and Wyoming, and they looked very much like Allegiance at the time. They had not had the right amount of capital infrastructure invested, they had slower internet speeds, if at all, not quite the right amount of, of video programming, and as a result, they had lost quite a bit of market share to the, to the satellite companies. That impacted the cities because franchise fees were tied to the cable penetration. As a result, we went in, bought them, invested well over a billion dollars, and built the fastest internet speeds you could get in Miles City, Montana, that you could get in New York City or Denver. Unfortunately, Mr. Bresnan passed away in 2011, and his family decided to sell the company. So once again, senior management, of which I'm one, we started looking around, we decided we just liked the business so much, and liked working in small towns, and as a... much, and liked working in small towns. And as a result, we started looking for another company to buy. And Allegiance is that first investment. Our plans are very simple. After a long time, a long period of a lack of investment, we're gonna be investing upwards of $100 million, putting a 10-gig fiber ring around the state of Oklahoma. And right now, you're looking at three or five megabit internet speeds. Within a year, you should be looking at 30, 50, or 100 megabit internet speeds, which are very similar to what you get in Oklahoma City or New York City. High-definition television channels, you get three or four or five now. You should be looking for 100 within a year. And customer service is much the same way. We, we give our employees a real reason to care, and we just could not be more excited to serve this town. I have Mike Magoria here with me, he's our general manager. And if you have any questions about the actual service, more than happy to answer them. If you have questions, if you'd like to look at what we've done in the past-
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Can we get free Wi-Fi downtown?
Great question. We did that exact same thing in Billings, Montana. And it is, well, I can't say that it is gonna happen in a month. It is in our business plan to do.
Okay. Arrest. Did I hear you say-
I have a second question. Second, can you start that right on this side of town?
I can say it'll happen all at once, when it happens, sir.
So, let me see if I, again, did you say you're gonna invest $100 million?
In the, in the Allegiance footprint.
In the Allegiance footprint. Okay. So Allegiance is in other places in the state other than just here. So you're buying throughout the state all the Allegiance?
Several states, actually. About 85 communities.
And I also think I heard you say that you thought within a year, we would have 100 HD channels?
Less than a year, sir. We, Mr. Mayor, we, just to give you an example, when we bought the systems in Montana and Wyoming, again, they looked very similar to the Allegiance systems as they look, as they presently look. We built 4,000 miles of fiber plant in Montana and Wyoming. And people say, "How is that possible?" You know, is Oklahoma, is hard? Well, I can say that Oklahoma tends to be like this, where Montana and Wyoming tend to be like this. So when you build 4,000 miles of plant, you're building 2,000 up and 2,000 down. And it's significantly difficult. We don't see any problem with meeting our deadlines. We tend to be a culture of under-promise and over-deliver. So while we're giving us a year budget, it will be significantly sooner.
One of the concerns that I hear is customer service. We hear that from several citizens. I don't know if any of you have heard it, that when they call and, do you have any plans?
I've been one. I've paid large sums of money for inadequate service.
So I guess my question is, do you see that beefing up? I mean, we-
Yes. I've been in front of a lot of, a lot of city councils over the last month, and I, and there's, there's certain questions that are inevitable. And the first one is always customer service. I think historically, you have to look at who the operators are. And we built a call center in Billings, Montana, and Bill insisted that instead of giving, giving the customer service representatives the little cubicles in the middle of the building, he gave the executives those windowless offices, and he gave the customer service representatives all the windows all around. The reason he did that is because he always said, "You can hear the smile in a, in a customer service representative's voice over the phone if they're happy." It's been our philosophy. We've won every single award the industry gives in customer service, in technical service, community service. And we won them multiple times.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
About the personnel, are you, are we gonna keep the same personnel, or are you changing personnel, or?
As I said, there, there are certain questions that always come up. One is customer service. The second is, are you gonna fire all our employees? And the third is, are you gonna raise rates to pay for this big investment? Let me answer all three of those right off the bat. We, our business plan is to win back, right now, Allegiance has a very small market share compared to what we're used to in the past. Our business plan is to build that market share back up. The good news for the city is that franchise fees are tied to that. We can't do that and cut employees. And so while we have 100 employees now in the Allegiance footprint, it would surprise me greatly if we didn't have double that within a year. I can't make promises on what exactly it will be, but you can't serve more customers with less people. To answer my third question, rates. To build back market share, we can't come in and raise rates rampantly and expect to serve more customers. The idea is to serve more customers. As a result, through that volume, keep rates where they are or lower.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Certainly.
So you need a motion for the resolution?
Yeah, I just want to leave, finish. Chair will entertain a motion now.
Happily so. I will make a motion to approve a resolution accepting the transfer of ownership.
I second that motion.
This is a resolution sent in to an approving the assignment of the cable franchise and system to BCI Allegiance LLC.
Call or roll, please.
Stevens?
Aye.
Wininger?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Herrod?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
And we'll be in touch about that free Wi-Fi downtown.
Well, when will this take effect, before we move to the other item? Is it effective immediately, or?
We, as Brian mentioned, it's an FCC process. We're scheduled, we have a tentative schedule for closing, if we get all of these transfers done, and the FCC transfers, and some other rights-of-way issues that we have, March 31st. We have an engineering plan in place. We have construction crews ready to go. As soon as that goes, we'll be investing.
Okay, item number eight. We had a lot of discussion on this last time. Discussion, consideration, and a possible action to appoint an insurance committee to consist of three commissioners and two staff members.
I'd like to address this upfront before we get into the actual discussion of how this is all gonna be. And this is by no means any kind of a vindictive-type situation for me. It has to do with what our discussion was last time, as to, as to whether we should allow any commissioner or their family members to be on the city's group insurance. And we still have currently a-
Excuse me, this not part of this motion here?
I, I'm not making the motion. I'm making a discussion-
Okay, but I mean, that's not part-
My discussion is, John, if you'll pass this down. Take one, pass it down. Everybody. Because of the situation that we have here, we've had a commissioner that has had a lot of benefits from this over the past year. And I understand that it's being removed. I understand that. But it's currently that way now. Even as we speak, it's currently that way. My position on this is that this is a benefit, and therefore, ethically, Mr. Herrod, our friend, my friend, Mr. Herrod, should release his vote and excuse himself from any kind of conversation because of the amount of benefit that he has and in continuing to receive. My handout here has got the rates that the city employees have to pay. And my only argument in this whole thing is that not only is he receiving a reduced benefit from my chart, that if you multiply it out, it's in the range, or has been in the range, around $30,000 plus, that this situation is unique only to Commissioner Herrod in the fact that he has had his wife on there when he is not on the city's group insurance at all. That is not allowable under our group insurance at present. If the employee is not on the coverage, then the, their spouse or any dependents cannot be on the coverage. So not only is we, is, he's received a benefit that far exceeds in the thousands, the, the fact that she has been put on as an employee further reduces the amount that she has to pay. So it's very unique to this individual. We are charged, as commissioners, not to receive any benefit or any compensation for this, John. My only reason I'm bringing this up is because I do feel like it's appropriate for Mr. Herrod not to vote on this issue, simply because he is and has received financial benefit from this coverage.
You really don't know what you're talking about.
Let, wait, let's don't get into that argument. The motion here is not related to him.
I understand, I understand. I am addressing the fact-
Legally, Mary Ann has said he can vote on.
I understand that, but I, and my, Mary Ann is, but we're dealing with a lot of ethical issues in the last month or so here.
Sure.
And I think it would help our reputation if we took the high road.
Well, and that's your opinion, Commissioner Smith. I have a different opinion. I don't think there's any conflict of interest at all.
Okay, I, I'd like you to explain why you don't think getting a $30,000 benefit-
I don't think there's a conflict of interest, because I, I don't see how it's gonna move him to vote one way or the other, even if his wife was on the insurance. She's gonna be removed.
I understand that.
So I, I just don't see that that's, I, I've struggled with that. I've said, where would the conflict of interest be?
Well, I think we, we discussed that two weeks ago.
I think we need to move on with the-
Well, yeah, I'm sorry. I appreciate your thoughts, and I think they're very good. But I think we have a, we have agreed here that, with, after all of our discussion, that we will consider possible action to appoint an insurance committee, consist of three commissioners and two staff members. And I will tell you to work very closely with the committees that are there. So the chair will entertain a motion. Do we have one? That's what we do here?
Wait, can I ask a question? How this is properly on the agenda?
There's, there was essentially no action taken last time. It wasn't approved, it wasn't denied. So it's not one of those things where you'd need a motion to reconsider, because nothing happened.
Didn't it die for the reason that there wasn't a second?
The first, didn't you have something that was three to three, and then the other?
Yeah.
Either way, nothing happened. So we don't need a motion to reconsider. So it's, it's still an issue that's out there, and someone requested, that God don't know who, someone requested to go back on the agenda, and, and the-
Can I ask who requested that?
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
I think it was Commissioner Herrod, wasn't it?
Mr. Herrod.
So, that's, that's how it's back on. And-
I'm just asking.
And under our rules, you know, one commissioner can put something on.
Well, thank you.
Asking you, yeah, that's what we're up here for.
I asked if it would be put back on the agenda, because the insurance committee wasn't-
Because the four of you all, that the disk shows, you all had previously decided who was gonna sit on the committee, filed the emails back and forth in the Carl's Jr. conversation. You all didn't have enough votes, right, at the last meeting?
Well, actually, we didn't discuss that. We discussed another item, which the mayor gave out to the staff and all the commissioners.
Yeah, we didn't, this was not what we discussed.
Well, I think, isn't there an email, Linda, where you've already put forth what the agenda should be for this committee?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I'm, I'm just asking.
Okay.
Because I mean, I've read through all the-
The chair will entertain a motion, one way or the other, here.
I would like to make a motion to appoint an insurance, for the mayor to appoint an insurance committee, consisting of Mayor Wes Maynard, Commissioners Linda AG, James Herrod, and Jennifer Dawson and Jill Smith.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. Call or roll, please.
AG?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Wininger?
No.
Smith?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Herrod?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item number nine, acknowledge sales tax report. It's kinda nice for you to come forward and tell us about some good money, huh?
Yeah, we have to make sure, we have to make something very clear on this. Sales tax this month was very good. We actually collected $2,245,000. But 630 of it was from the sale and transfers in Anthony's equipment. So that's a one-time deal, and that's going. So if we remove that, our sales tax was actually down $10,000 last month, or flat.
I looked at those numbers. Dang, what are we gonna do?
The, so that indicates that you're actually gonna be fixing a budget based on flat, or no increase, or?
Commissioner, we've, we've really just begun the discussion of what our budget projections for the next year will be. At SCDF the other day, some folks from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce and our partnership with them came to talk to us about what sequestration's gonna do with Tinker Air Force Base. It is not good. Some of my cohorts in southeast Oklahoma are already seeing some drops in unemployment, particularly in the munitions plant in McAllister, because the federal government's not ordering as much anymore. I think there's an impact probably of about $240 million to the state in terms of air force payroll in our state. That's probably gonna affect us. And I think that probably Tinker's about half of that. There are many, many, many people that work out there, and probably several thousand that work out there from Shawnee. And what they're doing is, is if you are not a full-time employee, you are essentially going to be gone. If you are a full-time employee, you're gonna be going down to 30 hours a week, and all you're gonna be getting paid is for 30 hours a week. You know, of course, that is still on the block from a federal government standpoint. But I don't, I don't project that our, that our sales tax figures are gonna be robust for the coming budget year.
Well, they predict, what, 16,000 cuts in jobs, not on Tinker, but across the state?
Yeah, it is not just the Tinker jobs that we're gonna be talking about, because there are a lot of support services that will be cut as well, such as the munitions plant in McAllister and others. So from a, from a budgeting standpoint, we've got a challenge ahead of us this coming budget year. Although, our sales tax to this date has still remained fairly what we projected for, for the year, so.
I have a question. I, I don't know if you can answer this by, I'm just catching you off guard. When gasoline prices were so high previously, did we see maybe a lift here in town on sales tax revenues, people not driving to Oklahoma City or something? Does anybody recall any of that?
I'm not aware, really, of an increase.
My opinion would be, Mayor, that really what ends up happening is, is our citizens end up spending more money on fuel as a percentage of their disposable income. And so the disposable income goes down.
Any questions?
So how's this windfall gonna be handling budget, do you think?
I think that's up to us, isn't it?
Well, we're, we're probably gonna do some budget amendments toward the end of this budget year, and we'll show it as a revenue. But we need to be cautious how it's spent.
I'm curious about the parking lot. There's no money budgeted. You know, the old building, Al James Building that was torn down, I saw somewhere, I think in your report, that there was $200 and something thousand that would've cost to complete that, and it's not budgeted for this year. So is that something that may be put on hold?
You know, we're, we're talking about it, the engineering just, department just presented me with plans a couple of weeks ago. And in our discussions, we'll need to decide how we're gonna handle the, the cost of that, because it wasn't factored in.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Item number 10, new business.
Mr. Mayor, we need to go back. I'm sorry. We were breezing through, and on the deannexation ordinance, we failed to separately vote on the emergency. So if we could have someone make a motion for a motion to-
Second.
Motion and a second. Call or roll.
Herrod?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Wininger?
No.
Smith?
No.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, did that clear that up?
Thank you.
You bet. Any new business?
No new business this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Administrative reports?
No administrative reports this evening.
Commissioner comments. Okay, item number 13 is to consider an executive session in accordance with 25OS B4, communication with the city's attorneys concerning pending investigation, claim or action. The grievances filed by the IUPA and IEFF, the city attorney has determined that disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the commission to resolve the matter in public interest. Also, item number 14, considering an executive session to discuss potential claims, litigation, or other options regarding encroachment into the city's utility service area by other entities as authorized by 25OS. Item number 15.
When we come back.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, 14. I will entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Call or roll, please. Herod?
Aye.
Wininger?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?